Coming, very much. Crystal, do we have a quorum, please?
Mayor Doyle Moss is present. Councilmember Contreras is present. Councilmember Gilliard is absent. Councilmember Runnabom is present. Mayor for Tim Lee Young is present. And Councilmember Cromwell is present.
Thank you. This time, would you please rise? Pastor Bob Hile of Willow Park Church of Christ is going to lead the invocation and the pledge. Pastor.
Our Father in heaven, we bow in asking for your blessing on this meeting tonight. We thank you for this community of Willow Park in which we live. And we thank you for those that work and serve here, especially we're mindful of our firemen and our police officers who protect us, who protect both our property and us. And we ask that you protect them. We ask for your blessing on the people that have been called to lead us in our community in which we live and work and play. And we ask that you grant them wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. And always, Father, we pray that we might be aware that every decision that's made is not just objective, but that it affects people's lives. We pray that we might always be guided by a spirit of community, by a spirit of justice, and by a spirit of love. And we thank you for this, Father. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Crystal, will you plug the comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We have a presentation right off the bat. The Trail Proposal. Give us your name, please.
Sir, my name is Larry Calvin. I'm the president of the Weatherford Mountain Bike Club. Hi. I am Larry Calvin. I'm president of the Weatherford Mountain Bike Club. And I also am a designer for Bear Hampton &amp; Brown, consulting engineering firm here in Weatherford, Texas. And I'm going to set up a couple of displays here, and then we'll get started. For y'all in the seating area, I apologize if these get in the way. I want to make sure everybody sees this. We've got some maps up here on the top. And today, I'm here to give everybody an outline on the proposal that the H D is heading forward towards the city of Willow Park for amending the Trails Master Plan, which I believe was written in 2019. And I've been working with Lee Young and Tony Fisher for over a year on developing a concept for trails to serve the community of Willow Park as well as all of Eastern Parker County. And I believe you guys have got a map of this in your packet. We've got something up there on the screen, as well as these little displays here. And I'm going to kind of give an overview of the area. The Weatherford Mountain Bike Club, the first trail is Quanta Hill. It's running in agreement with the city of Willow Park. It's a seven-mile mountain bike trail, and it's what they call single track. It's trail is built into the ground. It's not pavement. And that trail has been around since 2016. And the second trail that the Weatherford Mountain Bike Club started steering is Parks of Alito. It's down in Alito. The trail is actually in a subdivision of residential development. Right now, it's nine point two five miles long. We're having a meeting tomorrow morning with the land developer about adding upwards of another two more miles and actually adding on another forty acres of open space. When this trail's completed, we should add upwards of twelve miles of single track and a hundred and forty acres of open space. So I think this is probably going to be one of the biggest parks in Parker County. And it's less than four miles from Willow Park. So one of the things we wanted to do is I came to a public input meeting and suggested, hey, let's look at where we can build trails like this in Quanta Hill and Alito, and where can we build these in Willow Park? And being the kind of person I am, I just started running with it. I started riding my bicycle around and looking and coming up with ideas, how we can connect everything together. And then lo and behold, I get an email from Leah over a year ago, and she said, hey, we'd like to talk to you. And I thought to myself, great, I've got some ideas. So we had a meeting, and we came up, we had, we started talking about this land here around Squaw Creek, where the golf course is at. And we came up with a concept for this yellow and red trail. And then it just started kind of expanding from there, like the would if. So what if we build a trail over here towards, you know, the shops of Willow Park, or the shops of the commercial area over here? And what if we go down to TCA and, you know, next thing you know, you've got a concept plan for nine miles of trail. So that's kind of where we're at right now. The black lines you see here, those, these were paved trails or actually public roadways. It's a method of being able to ride from one park to the other. So collectively, this whole thing is called the East Parker County Trails. It's kind of what we're calling as an overview for the whole area. I've met with people, staff and elected officials in Weatherford, Hudson Oaks, Willow Park, Ametta, Ametta North, Alito, and had lots of positive meetings for most part. And so there's a lot of excitement about these trails happening. So some of the goals we have here for the amendment to the master plan is to identify areas of public and private lands that are suitable for trail development within the city limits of ETJ and Willow Park. And when I say trails, I'm talking about single track. Where can we build more trails like Quanta Hill and Parks of Alito? And, you know, I've been in the design business for forty years. I've been building these kind of trails for fifteen. And I can look at the topography and the aerial photographs, and I can identify areas like, yeah, that'd be a great place to build trails. So we want to start investigating areas like that. I think this item number two is probably the most important. Let's establish a framework for cooperation between the city of Willow Park, trail stewardship nonprofits like the Weatherford Mountain Bike Club, private property owners, and land developer developers to create single-track trails and bike lanes. This is what happened in Parks of Alito. The land developer saw an opportunity, because he had all this land he couldn't develop because of elevation change or flood pipe. So this land developer reached out to me and said, hey, we'd like to put a mountain bike trail out there. Would you guys be willing to steward it if we build it? So we formed this agreement. And that's how the Parks of Alito Trails came to be. And that's a super popular place. A lot of people want to live at Parks of Alito, because you have so much open natural space out there, and these trails right outside your door. So we want to look for more opportunities like that in Willow Park and in CTJ. Amending the Trails Master Plan will provide land developers with a concept plan for public, private trail development partnerships. When a developer comes in, and he's got three hundred acres, he wants to build single-family homes out there, we should be asking him, hey, what if? What if you want to get involved with Weatherford Mountain Bike Club? What if you guys want to put a recreational mini like single track mountain bike trails? You know, let's talk to these people and give them an opportunity to where we can build more trails like this. The great thing about these trails is everybody can take advantage of it. You don't have to ride a bike. You just, you can walk on them, you can run on them, hike on them. Obviously, you can ride a bike, you can go walk your dog. It's a great place to get outside. So let's look for more opportunities like that. Another thing we should be doing is we need to create a forum to educate the public on the stewardship responsibilities of single-track sustainability. I can say this about because I'm a native Texan. Texans do not understand these trails for the most part unless they've been out and seen them and see how they work. There's a lot of misconceptions about what single tracks trails are, how they can be used, and how they should be taken care of. So I think it's important, if we're going to develop something like this, is we also have an opportunity to educate the public as well. And then finally, we want to partner with adjacent municipalities to Willow Park and COG, in particular, to create a cohesive trail terminal in East Parker County. COG, North Central Texas Council of Governments, they've already identified a part of the regional bellow web that runs through Parker County. And actually, they're proposing that it enters downtown Alito from the east and runs along the Union Pacific Ground Route. Well, we have an opportunity to redirect that regional trail, to bring it up into Willow Park, onto the East Bankhead, into Weatherford, the Town Creek Trail, which is actually the terminus of where COG wants this bellow web to get defended. They want it to tie into Town Creek. So we have an opportunity to bring the trail up into the community of Willow Park and make this really the center of trail recreation in Parker County. And that's one of the long-range goals. So that's kind of it in a nutshell in terms of where we're at on the proposal. I've been working with Otis Lee. He's my supervisor at VHB. His little Shannon Nave. We've met with a bunch of different governmental entities to get this project, keeping the momentum on this project. And anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak with everybody, and if you have any questions.
Go ahead, Greg. So these trails, so are they primarily dirt trails or?
Yes, sir. Everything in the sea and the color down here is a dirt trail. And when I say, these things are professionally built. You know, the club works with a professional trail contractor, and these trails are built to be sustainable. And yes, sir, they're built from the ground.
Okay. So with this, you know, the demographic we have here in this city with aging population, I think we need more paved trails, in my opinion, you know? And it's a safer feature, I think, for that demographic, you know? I'm fast approaching it myself. So that's one thing. And the other is, towards the east further, you have, you know, north of Alito Dean Ranch being developed. And then there's a bunch of open land that who knows when it'll develop, if ever, but I assume it'll probably be sooner than later, you know, the way things go. But who knows? So I would like to know if, you know, if there's some plans to put a more detail out to the east, so that as these cities work together with developers, they can take that into account, and we're not trying to catch up like we are now, and do it the right way from day one.
Well, I'll say that that's part of the trail update to our trail plan. We do have ETJ that's not developed now.
Right.
That Derek's going to present on our future land use map. That's part of what we're going to do, is say we want to put some trail areas in all of those undeveloped areas of Willow Park.
Right.
And then, of course, meet with other communities to say similar. We should all be matching them up in a regional effort.
Okay.
So that's. And I'll say also, Greg, to yours, the black, everything on that large thing, that's the larger black, is paved. That, now, it's not all paved now, but that would be the connector, long-term, to have paved connections between all the dirt trails. So that's kind of the idea, that as each community works towards developing their single-track trails, we are working, especially through Willow Park, the center, to make sure we have the ability to create paved trails.
Right.
That will be, require funding and things like that. But if the plan's there, it's easier to get funding, so.
Yeah, this little description here, if all of, if all of this whole network is to create an all-weather, you know, hike and bike route, that's what this black line will be. Like if you're in downtown Alito, and you want to run or hike or ride, you'll be able to go all the way up to Lake Weatherford and around and back. It'll be actually twenty-six miles, so it'll be a marathon. I'm kind of envisioning having a Willow Park marathon when you start to see downtown goes around the lake. I mean, it could be just as big as the Boston Marathon.
There you go, Doyle.
I've never been accused of anything big.
The COG thing with Bankhead, where are you on that? Or is that just, were we just in discussion on that?
Actually, we've had a meeting with Chad Marbach. He works with the city of Weatherford. He's a professional engineer with the city of Weatherford. He handles all of the COG-related bicycle infrastructure.
Okay.
Information, stuff with the city of Weatherford. We had a meeting with him, and we discussed this whole plan. And we're actually going to work with Chad to get in front of some people with COG and show them what we're doing.
Good.
Because COG will love this.
Yeah.
They, we haven't formally made a presentation of it, but it's on our radar to do so.
Good. Okay. That's great. Thanks very much. Any other questions? This is great news.
Thank you very much.
Great information. Thank you.
My pleasure. Y'all very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Item number two, approved city council meeting, regular city council meetings of August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve council meeting minutes, the regular council meeting from August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, the city council may conduct a public hearing on the city of Willow Park fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three proposed budget. We're opening the public hearing at seven fifteen P M. Are there any comments? We will close the public hearing at seven sixteen P M. Item number four, to consider an act on adopting an ordinance providing for the adoption of the city of Willow Park municipal budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. In your packet is ordinance number eight sixty-four dash twenty-two of the city of Willow Park approving and adopting a budget for the city for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Crystal, would you please read the ordinance, caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, providing for the adoption of a municipal budget for the fiscal year beginning October one of twenty-twenty-two and ending September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three, providing that expenditures for said fiscal year shall be made in accordance with said budget, providing that this ordinance shall be communitative of all ordinances, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance, number, ordinance? Number eight sixty-four dash twenty-two approving and adopting a budget for the city of Willow Park for the fiscal year beginning October one twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Do we have a motion, please?
I move that the Willow Park City Council adopt an ordinance providing for the adoption of the city of Willow Park municipal budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's second. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Councilman Contreras, how do you vote?
I vote for budget ordinance number eight six four dash twenty-two.
Councilor Runnabom.
I vote for budget ordinance number eight six four dash twenty-two.
Councilman Young.
I vote for budget ordinance number eight six four dash twenty-twenty-two.
Councilwoman Cromwell.
I vote for budget ordinance number eight six four dash two-two.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number.
No, we have to do a separate ratification vote for that.
Okay. Since this budget will raise more total property tax revenue than the budget for the previous fiscal year, the council must take a separate ratification vote on the budget Councilman Contreras, how do you vote, please?
I ratify my vote for ordinance number eight six five dash two-two approving the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three.
Councilor Runnabom.
I ratify my vote for ordinance number eight six five dash twenty-two approving the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three.
Wait a second. I want to make sure this is, it's the same, it should be budget ordinance eight six four two-two.
I apologize. I was thinking of the.
Oh, excuse me.
Eight six four two-two.
Eight six four two-two.
Yes, that is, that's my mistake.
Correct.
And Eric is eight six four.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Young.
I ratify my vote for ordinance number eight six four two-two approving the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three.
Councilwoman Cromwell.
I ratify my vote for ordinance number eight six four dash two-two approving the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five, the city council may conduct a public hearing on the city of Willow Park proposed tax rate for tax year twenty-twenty-two. We will open the public hearing at seven twenty P M. Everybody's smiling. We will close it at seven twenty-one P M. To consider an act on adopting an ordinance adopting an ad valorem tax rate and levy on assessed property not to exceed point five three eight four five, point five three eight four five zero per hundred dollars valuation for tax year twenty-two for the city of Willow Park, Texas, including a levy of debt obligations, point two five four five oh nine, and a levy of maintenance and operations, point two eight three nine four one, consistent with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three municipal budget. Do we have a motion, please?
I move that the Willow Park City Council adopt an ordinance adopting an ad valorem tax rate and levy on assessed property not to exceed zero point five three eight four five zero per one hundred dollar valuation for tax year twenty-twenty-two for the city of Willow Park, Texas, including a levy for debt obligations, point zero point two five four five zero nine, and a levy for maintenance and operations, zero point two eight three nine four one, consistent with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three municipal budget.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Go ahead. Leah?
Me.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
But that has to be on the call vote.
Thank you. Item number seven, the city council may conduct a public hearing to consider the amendments to the city of Willow Park capital improvements plan and land use assumptions and amended water and wastewater impact fees. We will open the public hearing at seven twenty-two P M. We will close the public hearing at seven twenty-three P M. Item number eight, to adopt an ordinance for the city of Willow Park approving the amended capital improvements plan, land use assumptions, and the amended schedule of water and wastewater impact fees. Derek.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So we have really three things, three different efforts to discuss tonight, and I've got a pretty concise synopsis of the two different reports that contain these things. You guys have seen these, the C I P and the impact analysis. And right in the first step, and this really all culminates in the impact fee, adoption or change in the impact fee. And the first step in that process is to update your land use plans. And I know these are hard to see, but I think it's going to work as far as getting the gist of what we're talking about. This, what you see on your screen and what's in your packet is the existing land use plan as it exists today. It was adopted, I think, in twenty-seventeen. I don't believe it's been updated since that time, but with your COG plan. And actually, I'm sorry, it has. We did the C I P five years ago, in twenty-nineteen, three years ago, and updated it at that time. And this is the map that was created at that time. The future land use plan, which is really what, what plays into the other items that we're going to discuss, is what you see here. And you can pretty, you can easily tell by looking at the difference between the two what's changed. Essentially, from the last one, the ETJ has changed a little bit, so that was updated. And then all of the areas that were not developed or have not been developed through the existing land use plan have been filled in. And the biggest change you'll see along the I twenty corridor, all the kind of red, pinkish, purple areas, those are all commercial, retail, that type of zoning. And all of the yellow is single-family, and then the kind of the tan color that you see in the bottom, far bottom right and up at the very top, would be low-density residential. And so, and that hasn't changed a lot since the previous land use plan, the previous future land use plan that was done with your COG plan. Again, along the I twenty corridor, there's been a fairly significant amount of change, and that's been updated as far as where, where things came in. Some of the single fam, just on the south side of the interstate around Bankhead, where the Porter Track is, that was all residential initially in the previous plan, and we changed that. Some of that's been rezoned already, and some is anticipated to be commercial. So that's the biggest change. But for the most part, the bulk of the area that's currently undeveloped is being shown as single-family. And those, those areas will, the acreage of those areas will come into play in the calculation of the impact fee. So you've got a copy of the C I P report, the capital improvement plan, and this is kind of the synopsis of that plan, and we're talking water and sewer right now, as they relate to impact fees. But you can see on this table, it has a list of all the capital improvement projects that we have anticipated, and the total cost for those, which is in the third larger column. Some of the larger projects are a supply line, a transmission line from the new El Chico Pump Station up to the Foxon Elevated Tank, a couple of new elevated tanks, a couple of loops went along the west side on Crown and went on the south side of the interstate, and then several smaller projects that you can see and that are addressed in the report. But the total cost of all of those is projected to be eighteen point nine five million. And so, and that's the cumulative total of everything in the C I P for water. And if you look at the columns proceeding to the right, that percent utilization, when we, when we determine what the impact fee is going to be, that can only apply to new development. And so we have to determine what the percent utilization by new development will be for that cost, that eighteen point nine five million. And so that's an estimation made, and it's based on the areas in the land use plan. So we've got all the single-family residential, and there's a certain number of service units, maybe one per quarter acre, one per eighth acre, that you, that you assume for those areas, and then the commercial is a little different. And so that's how we determine what those percent utilizations would be. And so we subtract out the current utilization from what we project the new utilization to be, and apply that to those capital improvement costs, and we get what, what the impact fee eligible cost would be. And those are the costs, that's what you can actually apply to the calculation of the impact fee, since there. And those are the costs, that's what you can actually apply to the calculation of the impact fees, since they're strictly for new development. And you'll see, you can see down at the bottom that that total number is 6.13 million, just over. Uh, and so that's the number we'll use when we talk about the impact fee. And then on the wastewater side, similarly, we've got the, the capital projects that are listed in the larger report that you've seen. Uh, the new wastewater treatment plant is, is obviously the larger component of that. Uh, transmission line from the south, south side of the interstate, uh, lift station improvements and some other smaller projects. And the total on that was 16.615 million for the capital improvement, uh, program. Again, the percent utilization is calculated the same way as it applies to the wastewater. And applying that to the capital improvement fees, you come up with a total impact fee eligible amount of 3.526 million. And so again, that's, if you go through the, the impact of the, excuse me, the CIP report, it goes into a lot of detail about how these projects were, were developed and, and how those costs were, were obtained. Then you go into the impact fee report, which is a separate document, and is also based on those land use assumptions and the capital improvement fee, both of which you have to have before you can implement a, a, a new impact fee. And the requirement is that those be updated every five years, and then you apply it to the impact fee calculation. And so, uh, this sheet is, is directly out of the impact fee report, and it's the, kind of the synopsis of the, the water impact fee portion of it. And again, you've got the, itemized those numbers, the capital improvement cost, the larger cost, and then the, applying the, uh, percent utilization to it. And then for impact fees, uh, by law, you can only, you can only apply a maximum of 50% credit onto the eligible impact fee cost. So you have to further reduce that by 50%, and that's how you come to the three point, just over three million, 3.067, uh, for the, for the amount that will be, uh, directly, uh, placed into the calculation. And then the next thing you do is determine the number of, uh, projected water service accounts. And again, that's based on the, the land use, directly from the land use assumptions, the, the, uh, uh, capacity of the, the different land uses, single-family, commercial, and so forth. And we determine that to be 1,537 accounts. So you, you simply take the, the eligible cost at the 50% credit and divide that out, and you come up with 1,995 dollars per service account as your base, uh, impact fee amount. And that's for a 5/8 inch water service, uh, account. That's the smallest service account that you would have. And Willow Park, uh, only uses, you, you only install three-quarter inch meters and up, so you're one step above that. And so that's why at the bottom in bold there, it has the amount that would apply for a three-quarter inch meter if you apply an equivalent meter factor to it. Now, you'll see a little more on that shortly, but. So that amount is 2,993, and that's what we're proposing is the, the water service impact fee for your base unit here in Willow Park.
That's for new construction?
That's for new construction.
Okay.
New services.
Right.
I think the question was asked earlier, unrelated, but, but a similar. So anybody that comes in and wants a new meter, that doesn't currently have a meter, would, would pay that impact fee.
Okay.
On the wastewater side, again, the same calculations, uh, same numbers we went through with the 50% credit. And we projected 840 service accounts. That's through a 10-year planning period, by the way, the number of accounts. Divide that out and come up with two, $2,165 per 5/8 inch water ser, uh, water service meter for a wastewater account. And again, since we use the three-quarter inch service meters here, uh, the, the, the base charge would be 3,249 dollars on the wastewater impact fee. And this kind of describes a little bit more of that. If you look at these two tables, the bottom one is your existing structure. The top one would be what we're proposing. And if you look across, you've got 5/8, 3/4, 1, and so on up to six-inch meter size. And there's accepted meter, uh, equivalency factors that we used, and those are on the second line there. At some point when these, when your existing impact fees were calculated, because you don't use the 5/8s, it was kind of arbitrarily or incorrectly reduced on the 5/8 side. That should really be a, that should be your one factor, and anything above that should increase accordingly. So that's why you'll see the difference between those. But that lays out the amount that, that would apply to each meter size. So if you had a commercial entity come in wanting a six-inch meter, the water service impact fee would be 99,750 dollars for the meter, uh, based on a 50 times equivalence. And then you've got the wastewater just under that. And if you look at the, the total of both the water and wastewater is that bottom line. And if you compare that to the, the existing, uh, structure below that, you can see that the proposed, uh, fees are going to be a little bit less than what the existing ones are. And that's really, that's mainly a function of having installed some major projects that were, that were planned back at that time. And so, like the Fort Worth Water, for instance, and several others. Once those are implemented and you've got debt service, that does not apply to the impact fee. And so, and, uh, these, these proposed fees put you in the mid to high range compared to other entities, generally about, maybe the 75% and up percent top. So you're kind of on the upper end even of these proposed fees that were, that were. And lastly, since we are considering the CIP as well, the, the street and drainage CIP was, was updated and, and presented and reviewed recently within the last quarter or two quarters. And so I'm not, I didn't put a lot of detail in here about that. It is in the report, obviously. And there's quite a bit of detail in there. But the only significant change that you'll see is the cost and, you know, the increase in cost that we've seen. And so, these are the CIP costs that we came up with in the plan, which is 30 million, 831,000 or so on the streets, total CIP cost, and then 3.965 on the drainage, which is, is really close to what we're, what we had before. So. So that's kind of a quick synopsis, as I said, of the, of all the land use assumptions, the CIP and the impact fees. And I believe your, your action tonight is going to be your reward of those. I can go into much more detail if you would like, so. Happy to answer any question.
Council, as required, the capital improvement advisory committee had to review this, and they'd met on August 16th, as stated, and they recommend approval of these fees.
Can you remind me, are impact fees something that the city could waive if they wanted to for a certain builder or anybody like that? Or is this something that applies across the board?
To my knowledge, that is something that you, that could be negotiated at the time of development, uh, as a trade-off. Pat may have other.
Yeah, the ordinance provides for a refund or, or that type of process when, when they come in and discuss the project.
We've been working on this a while, haven't we?
Yeah, several months.
Any other questions for Derek? Do we have a motion?
We should read the caption of the ordinance if somebody would.
Make a motion to approve the city Willow Park capital improvement plans, CIP, land use assumptions, and water, and wastewater impact fees as presented.
Do we have to have the ordinance read?
Do we have to have the full ordinance read?
No, it's the caption.
Just caption.
Just the caption. Do you want to read the caption?
Yeah, go for it.
You don't want to read the caption? An ordinance of the city of, uh, of the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, updating and amending the city of Willow Park code of ordinances, section 13.08.003 of chapter 13, article 13.08, entitlement, entitled impact fees, approving the amended and updated land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, and amended impact fees for water and wastewater utilities, and providing for the findings of that enactment enforcement and repealer clause, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
That's what I meant to say.
We have a motion, we have a motion from Greg. Do we have a second?
Second.
Eric, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Any council comments?
Yeah, I want to thank, uh, staff. So we saw our numbers of sales tax for the last past fiscal year, uh, something around 1.7 million. When, uh, I started on council about eight years ago, something around 250 to 300,000. We've grown significantly since then. And it's because of investment by the citizens in our water, sewer. And, uh, so I want to thank everybody for that, and it's really going to help us going forward. However, 30% of that money goes to the county, and the county has done zero, zero, not one penny, to help this city with that investment, and they're getting all the benefits of it. And so that's problem number one. And problem number two, I couldn't believe when I saw it. Uh, I heard some rumblings out of, uh, county courthouse commissioners court. We have county commissioners that voted themselves huge pay raises, huge. 17,636 dollars increase in salary this year for every one of them. And some are getting auto allowance increases of up to 20,000, 20, over 20,000. And since 2020, commissioners, one salary alone increased, 44% increase. Commissioner two, 45%. Commissioner three, 26%. Commissioner four, 27. So by the time you add all this up, the county commissioners have awarded themselves compensation increases 60 to 70% from what I calculate. Huge. And so I'm digging into this further, and there'll be more discussion about it later. But people need to be aware of it. One other thing that to be aware of, that 30% of sales tax, that's what is being, that, we've invested in that as citizens. And so we're paying 28 cents now after this week when they approve their budget. So 28 cents per hundred. That 500,000, 580,000 that went to the county equates to about nine cents per hundred if that were ad valorem taxed. So really, citizen of Willow Park are paying 35, 38, no, more than that. And next year, that number is probably going to increase to over 700,000. So we're going to be paying about 40 cents per hundred to the county, way above what's anything out in, outside city limits. And every other city in this county has got the same problem. Unacceptable.
I'm done. Thank you, Greg.
I had a couple of things. Um, I would like for discussion at next, um, council meeting that we discuss potentially moving the council start time from 7 to 6 PM. Um, just kind of revisit that, see where everybody's heads at on that one. Um, and on a separate note, in regards to Willow Park Fire and the ESD, um, I am finishing up a lot of my calculations that I've been working on, and I've told a lot of people I'm going to, uh, present. So I'm going to start posting that on my page, um, my Willow Park City Council page. And anybody who would like to talk about it, you can call me. My number is 817-901-9949. I am not afraid of taking anybody's call. Please call me if you have a question. All I'm doing is presenting the facts and what the numbers are in different situations, in different, uh, types of scenarios. We won't know what the numbers really are truly, I mean, fully detailed out, um, unless it does happen or doesn't happen. But it's going to be a very comprehensive analysis of all the different financials regarding our tax rate. So I just want everybody to know that I will be putting that out there, so you can check it out, see what it is, and have at least that data, uh, to look at to make an informed vote in November.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would like to request that, um, on our next, uh, council agenda, prior to bids coming in for our roadwork, that we have a debt discussion of capacity, so that if the bids for the road package that we've already, um, approved last year, that, um, if we do have to increase the funding for that, we have the option to do so quickly, so we can act on the bid. So I'd like to have a debt discussion prior to the bids coming in, and I believe the bids may be due at some point in October. So just, I would like to get on record that, uh, I think Ryan knows to try to have a discussion before the bids come in, so.
So that could be either the 27th or the 4th.
13.
No, not the 4th.
But, no, today's the 13th. October.
It'd be 27th.
Yeah.
October would be the 11th. Thank you. 27th or the 11th.
Yes, exactly. Yes. Depending on when the bids come in.
The 4th is the follow, is the Tuesday before.
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, just one more thing. Um, one of our families in Willow Park has, uh, suffered, uh, a loss of a family member, um, and is going through some other things. So if you can, please keep the galley family in your prayers and, uh, your wishes and, uh, you know, reach out and see if there's anything y'all can do for them. Um, so, really appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any. Bill, do you have anything?
Uh, Chief, you want to, you want to mention National Night Out, just in case we're not here on the 27th? You want to mention that?
October 4th, 5:30. We have several food trucks, um, some, uh, not vendors, but community partners, but some animals and adoptions and all kinds of fun things that are family-friendly.
October the 4th, what day is that, please?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
It's a public safety event.
In a band?
This one is a community event. It's going to be in our parking lot. We're going to shut down the stage trail. So, um, and do we require partners to be there with us?
Okay.
They are now.
Thank you.
Let me get them on board.
Anything else, Bill?
That's all I have there.
Ms. Linda has double knee replacement in the morning.
Oh.
So wait for her and me.
Need to stop.
Two for one special.
Motion to adjourn.
Movie adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, everybody. Good night, Ira.